A motion to approve or move to approve?
Move to approve as amended.
As amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay, item number three consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed for further review? Okay, if not, item A is to approve the board trustee minutes for five twenty. Bills run through five two through five twenty-one for fifty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And to accept the planning commission minutes of five twenty-seven into record.
I'll have to agree.
Okay, is there a second?
I just said one.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no idea. It's the same deal.
Oh, good catch, good eye. Bills run five twenty-one. Right. Okay, so it's bills run five twenty-one through five thirty. Good catch, good eye, Trustee Stevens. You're on top of it.
And Madam Mayor, I'm with those two, have only.
Yes.
Right. Additionally, there's a check that is not on. There are three checks that we've been allowed here that. I don't know if your copy is good either. One is for thirty-one thousand approximately for the town hall construction first draw.
Right.
And then two smaller checks that were signed yesterday and this really they're not on here.
Right. Yes, and that information, I think trustee Stevens is over there. Back over there. And. Yeah, there were two other checks over there. Remember? I can't wait much.
Almost twenty-two dollars.
Yeah, twenty-two dollars.
But that wasn't through the five thirty-one.
And it wasn't.
No, but they were cut and they're ready to be issued, so I don't think you go anywhere. Just. I'm aware that those are going through a four hour next meeting. Is the intent particularly with the construction one is that we've cut it, we've cited, we will hold it until Dolan pays the town. And then once the town gets paid and they have that money, then we'll issue that to our chairman.
Right.
Should be happening quickly.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So there's a move to approve. A second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, at this time, Mr. Michael Johnson is here with us tonight, sir. Thank you so much for coming. If you want to just stand a little. Yes, just a little closer. Michael, Mr. Loman, do you get him on the screen? Let's see.
Are you captured?
It might be better over there by trustee Stevens. Yeah, trustee. That should be the corner, we need to mark an X right there. Like, you stand right there.
We're going to now with circle.
Yeah, circle or something.
Well, sorry.
No.
Just in background from Mountain States.
Yes, Mountain States, yes.
Okay, so Mountain States has been around since nineteen thirty-nine. We provide HR and legal support to all sorts of employers, small, large, public, private. Mainly through Colorado, our main offices in Denver, Colorado. We do have a semi-Carls Springs four columns. We recently expanded this guy there in the Dona. We do pretty much anything that you think of employment legal services. I'm not sure what else you'd like me to do.
That's very cool.
It's a membership organization, so you pay dues for the year and you can essentially call in and talk to our staff. In the Carls Springs office, we have three attorneys, staff attorneys, our directors and attorney. We have two and a half basically staff HR consultants. We do trainings, legal issues, pretty much anything that goes with employment, we help employers do.
So like, what kind of trainings would you be able to provide?
Competition trainings, discrimination, wage and hour issues, performance documentation skills, supervision, or competencies. Pretty much anything that goes with employment, we help employers do. I brought a couple packs of information. I also brought manhood, some additional information specific to the account. And I'm happy to come back and specifically go over my side of the tail. Essentially, we assist the folks to deal with employment-related legal issues.
And I'd like to introduce you to our town attorney, Mr. Matt Crowe, so please work together.
We worked Mountain States through a number of years with other municipalities. And they're highly recommended, at least by I've heard. Appreciate it. And my understanding is we came into partnership with them at your, not direction, advice.
Remindation.
Advice. Yeah, I've kind of talked to Mr. Crowe several times, so great.
Appreciate being here.
Sure, can I answer any questions? I know there's a lot of information that are so, I'm happy to.
Also, there's a whole lot of training.
But that's the. Yeah, I provided mayor word, our training, capital laws, some additional resources, online resources.
Are there any questions for anyone in the audience?
If we gave you fifteen seconds, could you cover the whole thing, room wood?
At one time, this is Trajan Vaughn from Howard Street. At one time, there was discussion about El Paso County Sheriff's Office being able to provide training for continuing competency in the security matters. Is anything like that being envisioned?
Okay.
I don't.
I don't think that's the same.
Yeah, we don't provide us those security services in that context more of. Let's say you hired a new supervisor, I know there's several openings. When those individuals are hired, we can assist with, say, employee handbook, or a job description, or helping them get a dispute with their policies and practices.
Okay, so we need an additional one then.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Yes, sir, please stand and state your name versus age.
Willie Alexander, ten eight four five Myrtle Street. So the training and service is mostly HR related.
I would say to a certain extent sixty, forty. We were founded as a legal organization, so most of the issues that come through our office are to the attorneys of legal capacity. But we do have those skills because if you really think about businesses and employees, HR and legal go hand in hand. So I would say most issues are something happened today and what kind of legal liability do we have? But at the same time, the HR aspect would be how do we prevent that from even occurring? So I'd say probably sixty, forty.
Are you familiar with employers' resources, Colorado?
I am.
Okay. Comfortable service?
We do more.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with that.
They're mine employer.
Okay.
Question on scope of services. Should we have an employee relations issue? Is that something that you come and you almost perform a role of an HR department? Or is that just be more consulting, sort of say? This is what I have to advise you both, having.
We can have both, okay. So in terms of your membership, depending on who's a member in terms of contact, I have members that call in and will ask, something happened today, what kind of issues or how do you deal with that? We do have a for fee service where we actually have what's called flex staff. They would actually go into and assist an employer, let's say. Short notice, the HR person quenched. Then you still have to process payroll, you have to deal with, you know, a variety of legal issues. That person would be able to step in and assist. So we can potentially be both. Most employers deal with the consulting aspect of the service.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anything else from the board? Yes.
Right here. Right, still got Carl Crowe, sure.
Yeah, okay. Maybe standing, maybe trustee Stevens. Okay. We're living in a new town hall, did you know that?
It works.
And so have a better, be able to have a better center, so. Okay, any other questions? No?
Do you have that contact information?
I provided it in the hotel. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, thank you so much.
Sure.
For coming.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have exciting news. We are going to swear in some new planning commissioners this evening. The planning commission has recommended to appoint Dominic Turnbull, Turnbull, excuse me, and Eric Caldwell to the planning commission. And so tonight, we are going to do the oath of office. So I'm real excited for you guys, thank you so much. So if both of you will come up here at this time.
Let's see, he has a motion to appoint.
Okay. Okay, who's it we need to? Is there any way to accept one? I'm just so excited to get this done.
Make motion to accept the message.
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Now you guys, you can come up. Miss Corner. Okay. Okay, I want to give each of you your oath of office this evening. And all you need to do is just hold up your right hand and read. Okay, so this Eric and Dominic. Eric, you go first.
I, Eric Caldwell, do solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Colorado and the ordinances of the town of Green Mountain Falls and faithfully perform the duties of the office of the planning commissioner. Owe my town and my town.
Perfect.
I, Dominic Turnbull, do solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the United States and the State of Colorado and the ordinances of the town of Green Mountain Falls and faithfully perform the duties of the office of planning commissioner upon which I am about to enter.
Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. And thank you guys for your service to our town. Thank you. And we had a chair, and actually, the chair should have been up here as well. And I do apologize, will be. Mr. Johnson, it should have been up here as well.
I was here. How can we do it?
I do have Jamie, she's here from the planning commission as well, so. Awesome. Yes, thank you. You guys, your service is invaluable to our town. We do appreciate the planning commission and all you guys do, so thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. And we have another exciting thing this evening. We do have the swearing in of a new board member as well. So I know I have to, we have to approve that then first before I say stand up here. I learned. Okay, so swearing in of trustee Don Ellis.
Make a motion to swear in Donna Ellis, trustee.
Is there any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Mr. Ellis. Would you step forward, sir? So we're gonna do the same thing with you. And you just take this and hold up your right hand and you can read.
I, Don Ellis, do solemnly swear by the ever-living God that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Colorado and the ordinances of the town of Green Mountain Falls and faithfully perform the duties of the office, trustee, upon which I am about to enter.
And just print your name right there. We have a namesake for you. And if you can move your stuff, then welcome aboard. Right away.
Right to work.
Right to work, sir. Okay, just put Mr. Ellis.
Now he's on his plate.
At his plate.
We're missing one.
Oh, that's me. Where's the chair?
The cook comes.
Okay, let's put Mr. Ellis, where is Mr. Ellis? There he is, right here. Look at you. We'll just set you right here, we'll get another, another, Mr. Cook, trustee Cook, when he gets here. You get a comfy chair. We take the roller. Awesome, it's beginning to feel like a full table.
On that side.
On that side. But we need someone here, and she's actually here, that we're gonna talk about later, so. Okay. Well, welcome aboard, sir. Thank you. Okay, if I start spreading, just get away. Okay, so I am number seven, public input. So at this, yes, Mr. Lackman.
Okay. Well, the TV is Dick Lackman, one oh seven five Ogle Lake. I did report that we wanted the construction people to look for Amazonite when they were digging over there. They did not find any. However, I made two trips back on the farm. I found two pieces of Amazonite. They were the perfect shape, crystals, et cetera. Unfortunately, I let our pastor keep them because she loved them. But I went back up there yesterday and within fifty feet of our property, I found a beautiful smoky quartz.
Ooh.
And I was started passing around.
In Green Mountain.
They're on top of the hill. These are technically a lubeal, which means they've broken off and rolled down, god, probably millions of years ago. But they have, they came from the top of the Grand Park Range over there. So we didn't find any on ours, but there was some up there.
Well, thank you very much. So are we gonna make some?
But that's the restroom.
So that's quite of our public input time, which is I am number seven. So I'll just unite you, please stand and state your name and where you live. And then if you can, please make your way so where people can see you on the video, that'd be great. So he's gonna go first. And remember, you have, you do have two minutes for public input. And I won't do this until you start talking.
I'm Tom Johnson, ten two six oh El Paso. And my house and my property are part of the town yard. And that's the subject of this. We have lost a number of very mature trees over the last couple of years. And I'm fully of the opinion that it's from the salt that's contained at the town yard. And it used to be an open pit type thing. I got after the county, whatever it was, three years ago, and they put a roof over it. Of course, it's open to the west where the storms come in. There's no, no floor on it and the maintenance department doesn't do anything in terms of mitigating the spreading of the salt after it's all, if you drive up to town yard, you'll see that the raw salt is dispersed all over the place. So I just wanted to come by and say we have a problem. I know you've got a lot of issues. So this may not be the most important one to deal with, but I would expect that you would look into it and request that you look into it and let me know what the response is. It seems we need a better container.
Sir, would that be the water drill construction?
Yeah, green. In the summer, it's open during storms, it's not just a winter issue.
Right.
And I've asked them to remove it from the bulk of it during the summer months, and that's too expensive. I've heard uses up there it sits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know, and it's good to see you. Okay, yes.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Sure.
My name is Daniel Lasai. And I live up on Hondo Avenue. I'm here, I'm not here for a very pleasant reason. I'm here because of the Marshall. Marshall Bradley. Now, I've been to this town council meeting before, and I also have a number of meetings with the previous trustees. And I realize that you two, you four people are new trustees, right? I'm gonna, did you get this, two page letter here? Did you read it?
Yes.
What about the town attorney? Did you get this letter, sir? It's a two-page complaint about the Tim Marshall?
I, I can't see it here. I can't see it here.
No, did you get an email? Well, did, I mean, it's two pages.
You know, I don't know what letter.
Okay, all right, I'll give it to you. Let me give it to you right now. Okay, I've been to these meetings here before, and I'm here today to ask the town council to hire Marshall Tim Bradley. And there's a very good reason for it. He took, he took office some time about May eleventh, two thousand and eleven. And since that day, almost within a few days, he took office. Mr. Bradley's been coming to my home, he's been intimidating my family, he's scared the heck out of my wife. We have tons of videos of this man and other police officers who used to work for him coming to our home in the middle of the night chatting their lives out of their house. Then, they'd come during the day, and we're not involved in any crime. We're not doing any kind of, involved in any kind of criminal activity. I don't have any kind of criminal record, I've never been arrested. In fact, I'm the Bigfoot UFO guy here in Green Mountain Falls up on Hondo. I've been on CNN, I've been in the Denver Post, I've been in the Gazette newspaper. I've been on Unsolved Mysteries with Robert Stack. Been in newspapers all around the country because I've been doing groundbreaking research with Bigfoot and alien mystery. Mr. Bradley, since the day almost that he took office, has been sending his cops and ham up to our home. Then he involved the Taylor County Sheriff's Department. After he took office, within days, Taylor County cops started doing the exact same thing as he has been doing. Now, I've got pictures to back up everything I'm saying, and I've shown this council here some of those pictures. Now, the videos that I have is gonna stay for our attorney. We're building a case right now against the town because of police harassment and intimidation. The latest event took place last Thursday. My wife and I take care of a home on Colorado Street, just a block or so down from our home. At twenty minutes of twelve, we came to the home on Colorado Street. These are friends of ours that own this home, they're from Kansas. We take care of it. We had done the laundry for him, and we were just, we had just opened up the kitchen door, and we went inside, took everything inside, all the laundry, we had a ton of laundry. We were there for four minutes, and all of a sudden, the kitchen door just exploded, bam, 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 bam. And I said, hold on, hold on. So I didn't expect the marshal to be there, so I walked over to the door, and here's the marshal standing there in front of the door. And he says, is this yours? And he's pointing to my Jeep Grand Cherokee. The car is parked on the side of the street, out of the way, with plenty of room for cars to come by. He just drove his giant blue truck past our Jeep Grand Cherokee. And he said, you get out here and you move this car right now. And I looked at him square in the eye and I said, you know what? I'm not gonna move my car until we're done here and taking care of these people's business here and locking up their home. Then I'll move it. So it took us a few minutes, he scared, my wife was scared, Fawn here was scared. She's just definitely afraid of the guy, of what he might do. So three minutes later, we hurried up, we got into a car, and he waited for us right there. And he waited to make sure that we got in our car and left. We then backed up Colorado Avenue, we then backed up to Hondo. However, this winter, there's been a little duplex down there that they've been remodeling. Since he took office on April second or third, when he was sworn in after the elections in April first, he, these cars, construction trucks have been at the bottom of Hondo, and they have been blocking the traffic for two months, probably five months, a little long. And he has never made an effort to get in there and stop these, telling the guys to park their cars across the street. In fact, I got two flat tires because of construction there. I had damage underneath my Jeep Grand Cherokee, which I had to take in and have it repaired. But yet, we went to that cabin on Colorado Avenue for three minutes, and he was peeing on the door and parking us. I'm sorry, it's unpleasant, but I cannot let this go. And we have an attorney, and we're building a case against the town. If he doesn't stop and leave us alone, this is what's gonna happen. We're not, we're going to continue our, our building a case against the town and against the marshal. You're gonna be, let's go.
Mister Science. Thank you, Mister, I'll be best out next.
Yeah, I did receive it, I just wanted to make sure that you can handle it.
Okay. 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 Yeah. Yes, it's still public input? Yes, please stand and state your name, sir.
Good evening, I'm Dick Bradley, I'm on Hondo Avenue. I wanted to refer to some discussions that happened at the last board meeting. When Mike Artrecher revealed the fact that we have some shortfalls in the budget. Specifically, the Green Mountain Falls pool, we need money, it's leaking, we need to fix it. So we're gonna do a quick patch. But we, in the long term, we need to raise some money for the pool. Town Hall, the Volo Grand requires a Green Mountain Falls local management of fifty-five thousand. As of last meeting, we still were about twenty-five thousand dollars short of that. The marshal's department has not been fully funded. His request has not been fully funded. So I want to make this clear to the citizens here that it's time for us to think about a fundraising campaign to help our town out. We're in tough times right now, and I would encourage the board of trustees to have fundraising effort. General fund, you can make out checks to the Mike Speed Community Foundation, fully tax development, and then to, and to put on a memo line, Friends of Green Mountain Falls. That'll go into a special account to make sure it's spent properly. So I would encourage everybody to think about making donations to the town to get us through this fiscal year and get a levy up by next year.
Any other public comments, Matt?
My name's Mike Loman, and I live on Hyde Park Road, in the other bit outside of the city limits. But I just wanted to bring the point, since the video streaming has become a little near and dear to my heart, I don't believe in a budget for the new town hall. There is a line item for the new cameras. Obviously, the connections and microphones and things like that should be reconsidered. Considering that we're going to be quite a bit larger than this and just shape-wise, probably require a couple of extra cameras. What I was proposing is that maybe there should be a block somewhere that donations for the answering equipment from the town hall. I believe I can get Sony Corporation to donate the cameras and microphones. And, but I don't know what other, other things are necessary. Water guns would be, trustees, KDA. There are all sorts of answering things. But the video streaming seems very important to our citizens, and maybe that should be one of the projects. Thank you.
Yes, could you just, yeah, thank you. Yes, come on up, but yeah, you can just, yeah, here. Yes, we're gonna need to put like an X or a circle. Okay, maybe a little closer to that. This is a small thing, but my name's.
This is a small thing, but my name's Diane Lloyd. Every night I go to the lake and pick up wads and wads of fishing line and hooks and cigarette butts and trash. And whoever is not empty, who's ever sm- emptying the trash cans, they're not emptying the little one on the other side of the lake. It is beyond smelling and overloaded and full. Since I've asked every single fisherman that I speak to down there and they still don't do it, if you're down there, please help. I'm tired of having to save little geese that swallow hooks and are tangled up in the lines. I have nail clippers in my pocket at all times. It's awful. And I don't know what we can do about it, but this is just tonight. I picked it up right before I came here. Five wads and a book. So that's it.
And where, what is your address?
10875 Hondo.
108, just for Suzanne's. Thank you. And thank you for picking that up and bringing that to our attention as well. Yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Gerald. Pamela Jerome, 1077 Hondo. We're summer residents, 55 years. And I want to say how great the town looks and how thrilled I am. Our road was great yesterday. We don't expect it a lot, but we're just thrilled it wasn't. The guy did a great job. The lake looks awesome. I don't care if the fountain's not working yet. I know that it will, will. The hillside across from Lucky Duck was moaned yesterday or the day before and it just looks great. I have a sense of happiness here everywhere, especially in this meeting tonight. The trustees are so impressive, our new trustees and our old mayor, working so hard. They're doing a great job. I'm thrilled with our marshal. He's been extremely attentive and I'm very appreciative. And I'm sorry that there are people that don't agree with that. I've been so impressed with all the noise coming from the pool. They're resurfacing it. I'm hearing it up on my hillside. They must have worked 15 hours yesterday working on the pool. And lastly, I agree with Dick. Appreciate your point. Let us know how much does the town need for 2014? Because there are a lot of summer residents. We tend to be the people who've been here the longest. And there are a lot of people, because I found this in raising money for Rock Day, who will be very generous if you will give them a specific project and tell them how much money.
Thank you. Anyone else's public comment? Okay, thank you all for sharing tonight. We really do appreciate you and hearing what you have to say and our town is for you and so your voice matters. And so thank you for speaking up tonight. Okay, we're going to move right on to the municipal pool update. And trustee Cook unfortunately had an emergency down in the springs. He said he hopes to be back by time to talk about the public works position. So I am just going to step in and give what I know about the pool. And we do have special guests this evening and we do have lifeguards to hear. Are you seven?
Yeah.
Yes, come on over with the other guy.
Hello.
So we have, we have lots of our lifeguards. So ladies, you probably gonna need to be on the camera. So we're going to have to ask you to be on here as well. And I invited them tonight to, mainly to meet the board. So the board had an idea of who was working for us. And I did meet with them last week and they had some wonderful ideas to share with the board. And I started off with a question that I said, if the sky was the limit and there was no money constraint, which we know is false, what would you, what would you like to see with our pool? And what would you think, you know, what I'm saying, like what, what do you want and what would you want to see? Again, there's no money constraint, but we all know that that's a lie, right? There's going to be tons of money. But this got the conversation going with these gals and I invited them to come tonight to talk with you guys about some ideas that they had. Let me back up just a second. I did get, I did speak to the people that are working on the pool and they are doing amazing job. And I do thank you guys for putting up with all the noise in town. And please know, this is not an every year situation. We got it probably yesterday at town hall. Is this going to happen every, every June in May and now? And the good news is it should, you know, like the years, the board will have to do the sandblasting again. It's my understanding. In fact, the product that they're using, it's like 12 years joint warranty or something. That's why I occurred today. So please know that it's not going to be happening forever for all of you guys that are out there and go like, why is it so loud? They're sandblasting the pool and it looks great. Unfortunately, we are not going to be able to get it open by June 7th due to just the maintenance that needs to happen. So the date has been pushed to June 12th, which is next Friday, the following Friday. So this is the first time the gals have heard that as well. So, so June 12th is the tentative date for opening the swimming pool. So I think that's all I had on my mind, but so ladies, would you like to share some of those ideas that you had with us? And again, there is a money constraint and like.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. So just share some ideas that you might have for the pool. So. First, I'll introduce you. Who are you?
I'm Whitney Bradley-Hopkin. I live over in Cascade.
I'm Tori Remus. I live in Jupiter Park.
I'm Megan Brown. I live on, I'm passing through.
I'm Seven Morgoth. I live in Colorado Springs.
And we're missing four, we're like, four people tonight. So, okay, so some ideas.
So what we kind of talked about is letting people outside of Green Mountain Falls know that we do have a pool here and everybody just needs to come because it's not just about the pool. It's also about, like everyone's been saying, the community. So if we got maybe a logo, create a logo for the pool and incorporate it to the community and the town and maybe made a Facebook page, Twitter, anything else you can think of. Because no matter what, everything's going to technology. So we kind of need to follow that. We also talked about on the publicity side, doing something in Brontes and letting, just another way of letting people know that we're here and we kind of need your help. And then also, I think we mentioned Ice Peak Hill Prime Fan Fest down on these two homes. And then.
I think one of the bigger highlights was moving to Willow Park because they have the hotel pool, I guess, which is open to the public, but it just doesn't hold the quality that we can provide. And I think we are very capable of competing with them and succeeding. Sorry. And so I think expanding from just Green Mountain Falls community to Willow Park and Cascade and surrounding areas was going to help out a lot, too.
Also, another thing that we mentioned is we do have three lifeguards that are certified in actually being able to teach your kids how to swim. I know in the past, we've had guards teach lessons, but now there's guards that are actually state certified. I think it's state certified, but there's two that are certified in Swim Lessons University. And then there's one that's trained in Swim Lessons University and WSI. And WSI is more on the safety part of learning how to swim, whereas Swim Lessons University just teaches first mainly like how to float and then how, if you go under, how to get yourself back up and not freak out. And then it goes from there. So, is there anything else?
We talked about sponsor, getting people to sponsor the pool and maybe have businesses donate to the pool or something, right? You talked about that. Maybe having, what does that look like?
With the sponsorships, what it would pretty much be is we would go to different businesses and ask, if you display our logo, can we display yours? So in a way, it's making both sides of the deal work because they're getting customers from us and we're getting customers from them. So, and even with the sponsorships, we wouldn't have to spend any money. The only way we would probably need to is getting a way to display those logos. But if we got enough, we could probably just put it on one big banner. So we won't have to keep printing paper, keep printing stuff to display all these logos all over the place. So if they're on, it's just like one banner, one place. That way, everybody can see it when they first walk in the doors and they can ask, hey, like, what's this about? And then we can tell them.
Just going off of that, I mean, we get a lot of questions about, what's a good place to eat? Since we're all local, we don't want tourists coming in over the summer asking good places to stay, good places to go after we're swimming, stuff like that. So I think through sponsors and showing other people's logos, that that would help with that as well.
Board, so I would like to, Tori here. I love these young gals because their brains are so amazing. They have so many great ideas. Tori would love the Green Line to set up a Facebook page or group for us to give the pool going. So I'd like the board specifically to sort of say, go for it, Tori. And turn that over to her and then we can all like, all of us are on Facebook. Like the page, the group or whatever. And so I would like that. Do you all have questions about that specific part? Could you tell her to?
I would say that would be a very good idea. I think all of your ideas were very good, well thought out. And I think they would definitely have a good impact. Very nice.
Very good. And for your list of ideas, the money didn't really come to me.
We did talk about open, why don't you talk about, someone talk about the hours a little bit more? What you found?
So, sorry. Yeah, you're not that tight. So currently and in the past, we've been open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with a lunch break for an hour, half an hour, half an hour, and then an afternoon break for half an hour. We would like to propose to open at 10:00 and then extend our hours to 6:00 or even 7:00. Because right now, we're looking at like going on 8:00 and we're still lit. And I know pushing it later is going to require light. An update on the lighting we have in the pool. But I think if we stay in the 7:00 or 6:00 range, we won't need to update any of the lighting or update any of the other pool equipment. And that'll give us up to two more hours of revenue. Because the past summer, we have people who are swimming up until 5:00, but we have to pretty much kick them out because we're closing. So by opening or pushing our hours back an hour or two hours, I think that opens more people to come in that are getting off work, that can bring their kids after summer school or daycare or whatever. And pretty much make the day longer so people can enjoy the swimming pool more without having to impact the lifeguards or devices we employ.
Any other questions?
Is there just one light in the, inside the pool in the front?
We don't have any under the surface of the pool. We have one floodlight that goes on the back deck. And then we have the safety lights that are made to come on like if the power goes out or anything, surrounding like the back house, inside the bathrooms, and then the water came off.
So may I get that for just when you got the light in the water?
Yeah.
I think that's.
I, I don't want to say a direct answer because I'm not sure like legally or where that stands. But coming from just the lifeguard position, I would feel comfortable without having lights underneath the surface. Just because of, yeah, it's wide enough from the natural sunlight and the pool is small enough. And we get to six and a half feet, so there's, it's shallow enough that you can see the bottom of the pool at all times.
The water is not national, maybe somebody's battery driven lights, pictures drop in and recharge and turn up again.
Oh, it's money. Yeah, we're starting to talk about, we're starting to talk about the money trustee. So, okay. Margaret.
I know, no longer trustee, right? I almost said it. So I have a question regarding revenue. Are you guys thinking about working on protocols to reopen later in the day? Because I know a lot of times it's really dry because it gets cloudy and what's, what's the protocol? You have to wait like a half an hour after the thunder or something, of course. You know, I know there's a protocol for closing, but then after a while, it's an hour and then it's sunny again. So that would help revenue too, to be able to reopen and have that protocol in place if you guys are willing and if, if there's, you know, so it's just a, just a suggestion in the bud.
Do you guys have a protocol about that now?
Currently, we are out, we have, we're required to pull all the swimmers out. If it thunders or lightning, if it's just dry rain, they can swim. But as soon as we get thunder or lightning, everybody's out for the pool for half an hour from the last thunder or lightning strike. Typically, people will leave if it starts to rain. We're not kicking them out. They just choose to go. If they choose to stay and it continues for two hours, what was last year's regulations that we then close, just so the town is paying lifeguards to be on the clock, not doing anything. I don't, personally don't have a problem with opening up because everybody knows Colorado's bipolar weather. It'll be raining for 10 minutes and then it will be sunny afterwards. The only problem I see is our lifeguard transportation.
Right.
And I don't know if parents are driving or what, and if they have an opportunity to come back to the pool later in the afternoon.
Yeah. Okay, I have a question for you guys. Can you stand this just a second? Nikki McKnight, 10605 Green Mountain Falls, Georgia. Do I still have to stand? No, okay. This idea about trained lifeguards for the swimming, are you guys thinking of doing lessons? Or are you a charge for the lessons?
Are you certified? Okay, well, I'm like in these group of four girls, I'm the only certified one. We are looking into group lessons as well as private lessons. So it's something we're looking into and we're just trying to see where we can go with that and if the board agrees with it.
Okay, so it'd be like from 9:00 to 10:00 would be swimming lessons and the pool would open to the public at 10:00.
That's something we have talked about. It will continue down the school for group lessons or not.
I think that's a great idea because I think people need to know that.
Yes.
Right, that's a great idea, yeah.
The pool that I work at does that. And then they also, you can actually rent out the pool. So you'll have your closing time at 6:00 and then you can rent out the pool from 6:30 or 7:30 and have birthday parties or you can do day rentals. And it just depends on like how many people are there, how much it costs. But that brings in a lot of money for that.
Ms. McKnight, you hear that they brought a lot of ideas, but they also did some research as far as some other pools have done.
Excellent.
So they're, they're working on that.
The other idea we talked about was staying open a little later through, we normally close, yes, we normally close the hall in August, like real soon. Can you expand on that conversation a little bit as far as what thoughts were about that?
So we had discussed elongating the summer season because in the past, we've closed first week of August, second week of August, just because all the lifeguards are currently in school. And it's hard to keep track of employees and school schedules and putting everything together. With college, it would depend on each person's personal schedule. But we would like to elongate the swimming season for, I think Labor Day was discussed. We don't know if that being the ultimate goal, if that's going to happen just because of personal schedules and when school starts. But I think it's definitely doable that we add another week or two, maybe just through the weekends. It was also discussed that we were just open Saturdays and Sundays for up until Labor Day. Something along those lines that would be flexible to fit around schedules like school, but we were still open to the public.
Well, and this year, there's also a lot of guards that are staying in town that can actually work. I think there's one or two that are going out of state to college. So this year, with everybody staying in town, I feel like it's doable.
At night, we tarp top of the pool. Because basically after first September or so, the nights get really cool and it leaves so much of your heat. But maybe not have the pool open as late to even know you're staying. But maybe not have the pool open as late to even know you're staying around the days for an actual week or so.
I think they were just talking through that first like Labor Day and close that weekend.
Right.
So.
Kind of random how it is. And who are these?
Yeah, yeah. Um, question, yes?
Uh, unfortunately, I hate to bring this up, but Rob was our only person that was state certified to say that the water was right, the temperatures were right, everything was working right. Have we replaced that position?
We have a guy from Manitou, there are two guys coming to help us kick off and get going here. And he's gonna take a look at everything, he's gonna do the chemicals for us. Um, one of the things we need to discuss, board, is Megan had shared with, with us that the class is the $200 class, Sean Newberry. Sean Newberry is actually the one that was certified to do that. And he was the one that came and, and did everything. And he took a class, I learned, I learned all this. He took a class and it's about $200. And, um, that's what he did and he was that person, Mr. Lachman. So Megan has offered to take that class for us. The next class is in July and it's a two-day class.
We have one in June, just a crush.
Oh, right, you really? Like, I thought it was already done.
Well, I wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget. Yeah, one June 27th and one.
Perfect, so that's even better, I didn't see that. So Mr., the pool guide for Manitou could step in to help until she could get certified. And then if, you know, the board approves, we could have our lifeguard being the person that does what Sean Newberry did. So that's an option.
I think that's approved.
I think that's a great, yeah.
Just to expand on that and get a little more background. It is state required to have a certified pool operator contracted through any public pool. So once we open, uh, Roy Chaney was talking about through Manitou Pool, that he would be required to formally be contracted through the pool up until if you guys chose for me to take the class or he wanted to stay contacted whichever one, whichever decision. Um, but you would pretty much just go over the in and out of operating the pool, the water, the treatment of the water, the pump, the auto feed practices for everything. It would be a beginning to end class on how to operate the pool, which I think is very interesting. Um, it's a five-year certification after you pass the written exam before having to recertify. And the recertification is in another class, it's just checking back the exam saying, hey, I wanna recertify for the next five years. Pay a small fee, it's not the $200, but it is five years valid.
Does it just occur at the end of the training?
Yes. And you have two options there, you have a two-day, 30-hour classroom class or a blended class which you take online for one class and then come in for the second day of the class. I guess it's just personal preference as to which one works with your schedule better.
So board, do you think about that? You think that's a, that's good?
Maybe they come up with a lot of ideas that'll make the, make that work well.
Yeah. Um, so we recovered right at the beginning. And so we can put this on the agenda to talk more about if we want to let Megan go ahead and do that?
What do you mean sign up for it?
Um, but up until the day before it starts. And I did email, I think his name was Rick, possibly. Rick sounds like a good name, we're gonna go with that one. And I did email him just to make sure there was availability in the class and everything. He said, "It's a go as long as you guys approve," so.
So then we went away to talk about approval, trustee Bud's vote.
Um, I'd say, I think we're, I think we're good money wise if that's what, I think with the pool, I think, uh, I think we've got $200.
So I'm gonna tell her. Okay. So is there a motion to, um, approve man then to take the class to become a pool operator? Person? Yes. Motion is second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye, opposed? It's okay, we have a pool operator here. That'll be good.
Better person.
So, yeah, two better guys. Yeah, right, yeah.
And since the board, uh, actually said it not to host the, uh, meeting this weekend, uh, our office will actually sponsor that.
Oh, my goodness, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Perfect. Okay, and then the last order of business right before these guys sit down is we need to think about the hours of the pool because if it opens, it's gonna open.
That is going to take some, every hour that's like open extra is more salary.
So we can open on our normal hours and then we can always change it, correct?
Well, we've got a week or so to figure that out.
I think we could.
But we don't need to get it before. You know what I'm saying?
Do you need board approval to set hours for the pool? Um, I think we need to, or I think we need to open it regular hours then.
Open it regular hours and then we can.
Modify it.
We can bring it back when we have more time, or we are led to. Okay, so that'll be good. So we'll open.
Very good idea.
10:00, just 10 to 5:00. 10 to 5:00, starting, uh, 5:00, no, 2:12. Okay, and then, uh, we'll be meeting one more time maybe cause the, it needs to be with Chief Murphy and all that. So we'll get that organized. Okay?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, can I add one more thing? You guys have talked about, wait, just I'm getting confused. I don't know if you've heard any further with tank tops and sweats and stuff? Yes, we, yes.
Maybe you did some research again and, uh, I, I put it into the, the numbers and it's, uh, it's good.
It's good. So before you guys leave, could you please, um, write down your sizes for me? Okay, on some paper and then just leave it back there at the, on the back desk. Yeah, and then just leave it on the desk right there. Thank you, guys. Uh, it's Tori, go ahead and start your Facebook.
Will do.
And then friend me or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Awesome, thank you, girls. It's good stuff. Just one last, yes. Um, moving on to Alon, Alon and Mr. Cook is now here to update us on Megan's current public board's position, um, tonight. We have, um, his, his amount to me was, we are.
Can we table that if you want?
Okay, can we table it?
Can you table that?
Yeah, let's move that to the end of the meeting and show them, we'll see if he shows up here to talk more with everyone about that. Okay? Uh, so we'll go, the next order of business is the public hearing. So at this time, we'll close our regular meeting for a public hearing for a second reading and adoption of ordinance for dash 2014 and ordinance establishing a code of ethics regarding conflict of interest for elected officials and employees of the town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado. So our regular meeting is recessed at 8:05 or 6:00, 8:06. And we are in a public hearing at this time. So are there any comments from, um, anyone in the audience considering this at this time? Um, it's Mr. Cobb.
So this is the, uh, ordinance that was initially adopted by, uh, initiative. Um, there were certain ambiguities that we tried to amend, uh, one of which being, uh, whether these lifeguards apply, uh, whether this applies to lifeguards, it did not. So you can tune out. Let's see, it went, uh, specifically exempted seasonal staff, part-time staff, and independent contractors. Um, uh, let's see here. Uh, and then, uh, we, we actually drafted it so that it mimics the state statute, um, which is 24, 18, 105, 2, 3, and 4. Um, and then, uh, again, uh, exempted seasonal staff, part-time staff, and independent contractors. Um, and we did draft this one, so. I think it, uh, fixes the issues that were brought by the, the, uh, initiative without overriding, um, the intent of the initiative. So I think you made your citizens that people by docking it and, and make sure that you guys had a real clear ordinance.
Again, are there any comments from the citizens at this time about that? Okay, if there are no other comments, we're gonna close our public hearing at 8:09, 8:09? My eyes are getting red. Okay. Oh, it's 8:06?
9:00.
8:09. And, uh, we're back in our regular, uh, meeting again. So board, um, this is the second reading. Um, we have seen this document except for trustee Ellis here quite a bit. Um, it's the same thing that, um, we were presented with last time. Do either of you guys have any questions about anything?
Just want to point through.
Yeah. So just, this was, this all came about, um, the petition that.
This is an admission.
This, this is an admission is, and we're gonna have an election, you know, special. Yeah.
This is, this was the final proof to jump through to avoid the election.
Right. And then concerned citizens have to vote with this and we do, you know, agree with this, so. Perfect.
I make a motion to approve secondary.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, good. So good, so that passes. Thank you, Mr. Cobb, for your help on that. Okay. Uh, moving on to item number 11. Is the review of resumes and applications of candidates to fill one vacancy on the board trustees. Um, at this time, we all received an application yesterday.
I see one, is that all?
We had one and then Mr. Lachman wrote one in, um.
Yeah, you got one?
Right, he had offered that. And so Barbara Gardner, and we, is here this evening. And we've seen her application. And, um, she has already stepped up and helped us. She's sitting in town hall this week answering phones, so she's jumped in. And I think, um, I think this might be a great asset on the board trustees and will work well with us. Um, we do need to fill this slot, yeah.
Unless you want another election?
Yeah. Right, which we don't.
Yeah, you, you have 60 days, uh, under 31433, uh, to appoint vacancies. Um, your 60 days actually runs out before your next meeting. Um, so either I would suggest you appoint nine, um, or, um, I'll bring a special election, uh, resolution for you uh, next week, you know, in 13, in two weeks.
So I, I move to appoint, um, Barbara Gardner to the board trustees to fill the vacancy and assert with us.
Second.
Okay, are there any further discussions about that? No?
It's just lunch.
Yeah, she was.
Right, yeah. That, so as to not follow the trustee, um, treasurer issue, that she is, uh, working with the town as volunteer.
Right.
So she's not an employee, we're taking two, like, as one light.
Right, no, you're strictly volunteering, yes. Just answering phones would be a great finding, that's it. So, okay, so are, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so we're doing a, Mr. Cobb is swearing in this evening?
Unless you wanna have a.
Okay, so we. So Barbara, we're gonna, Mr. Cobb, we're gonna need to define to do other things, please.
Um, as far as that, that's an administrative law. So if you do the old, um, she can sign that whenever.
So I could just read it? Okay, so I could just read it?
You can read it.
Two lines, or, yeah.
You can read it and repeat after me.
Okay.
As I think you did with Marshall or you can't say fewer, just don't read, it's a.
Come on, Barbara. Yay! Wow, exciting night. I know, so weird.
I want to be in the next one.
And would you rather repeat after me or would you rather stay yourself?
I'll repeat after you.
Okay, okay, so just hold up your right hand and say aye. Aye, Barbara Gardner.
Aye, Barbara Gardner.
Do solemnly swear by the ever living God.
I do solemnly swear by the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinance.
Of the town of Green Mountain Falls.
Of the town of Green Mountain Falls.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Thankfully perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
Which, upon which I'm about to enter.
Which, upon which I'm about to enter.
Yay, congratulations! Are you going to seat?
Right, right down here.
We're gonna seat you.
Yeah, but you're.
Oh, okay. Yes, grab your seats. We have a dining place, but we, make sure. There you go. Well, welcome over, we have a full table. Wow, my goodness. Okay. Yes, you're on there. You better.
What, what are your rooms?
Here, sit on down. Are, is she in there now? She's in there now? Okay, um, reports, um, mayor's report. I did go to a mitigation, El Paso County mitigation hazard, um, committee meeting this week. And I will be meeting with Chief Murphy and Chief Bradley on Thursday to go over the worksheets. And we have to like plan an action objective for every one of our things. And it's confusing right now, but we're meeting, we're meeting. Yes, to get not confused. There you go, but we will be meeting, um, this week. I will be meeting with Chief Bradley and Chief, um, Murphy to help develop these forms. And if you recall, they came and spoke with us, remember? Um, they came and spoke with us about this litigation plan. So that's moving along. Um, what else? I do wanna say, um, you know, he has to meet himself and then step in and help us right now on Mondays. Our town hall hours are gonna be different just depending on if we get someone to sit in right now about that. Um, that job is post, being posted, I think trustee, someone will talk more about that. Trustee Bud, you want to talk more about that? Okay, so that's my mayor's report. Um, trustee Quinn, you got a report?
Um. Nothing specific, but I think I will, um, engage with Mr. Messiah and try to help him with this issue. See if we can help that out.
Feel free to comment, may it be you the people. Okay, I, I'd like to document everything. You know, I don't know, Chief Bradley, do you have a report?
Okay. Trustee Ellis, do you have anything to say or in reports now?
No.
Okay, okay, well, we're glad you're here, so thank you very much for stepping in. Okay, trustee Buzz?
Um, I'm working on the budget, uh, one department at a time. Met with, uh, Chief Bradley for a while, looking at what he needs for the rest of the year, and I think we've got a handle on, on what, on what his needs are and where to go from there. Um, worked on the full budget, uh, some last week, and met with a couple of the lifeguards uh, this week, talking about moving forward, uh, so they've helped, actually, a lot of the ideas that they came up with ended up in our, our budget, just trying to mold what they've, uh, got. Very sharp, young ladies. Um, working with, uh, on the public works budget, uh, right now, and, and meeting with, uh, Mr. Cook to, uh, take a look at what we've got versus what he needs, uh, what he perceives that we need moving forward, so it's a, it's a department-by-department analysis. Uh, down the road, we'll be taking a look at the admin budget. Uh, speaking of the admin officer, the jobs were posted, uh, there's two jobs posted, a clerk and a deputy clerk position. They were posted before, uh, this trans- due to left, on both CML listserv and, uh, CML, which is that Colorado Municipal League. Uh, this past Monday, those also got posted to El Paso's website. Everybody that's posted that is, has replied through the listserv, but not, we're direct, now directing them through the El Paso, just because El Paso, uh, we wanna mirror the same thing that we're doing with DPW, which is allow El Paso to assist us with their human resources, uh, expertise. Uh, we're actually getting some feedback. We're, we posted a job for three weeks. We've actually gotten several applicants already, so it's, it's, it's good that, uh, good that there's response. And, uh, we haven't set a timeline as to when, if we're gonna wait for three weeks to, uh, expire before we start holding interviews, and we haven't even talked about, uh, who's going to hold the interviews. Um, I, I know Cindy, who is filling in from Calhoun in Ramon, um, on Mondays, uh, is a clerk and has offered to provide her experience in the interview process, uh, so we've got that. I, I think I understand that Moon Park has agreed to do, to help us with that as well. So it's good to have some people that, uh, has got, have that experience. So I think that touches all the things that I've been working on.
Have we posted the vacancy for clerk and deputy clerk at the post office?
Uh, no.
There's immense amount of talent from your own town here. We wanna make sure that they have a chance to apply.
Absolutely.
Yeah, maybe put it on the timeline side too.
We're gonna put the link in.
The link will be on the timeline side, it just got posted, uh, just as the DPW wanted, um, but I'll, I'll take care of doing both the DPW and the clerk.
Thank you.
So, and, and just to clarify, we can, we'll list those, but everyone's gonna go through El Paso County, like, clerk, to, to apply, so.
I'm pretty sure El Paso County, so they would help in the interview process too, if they needed.
And, yeah.
I just wondered if you put it in newspapers also, like, uh, The Courier and the others? Uh, do they have to apply through the county to work here?
Yes.
Uh, no one from Teller County could really work here, right?
No, no, they, they, they don't have to live here, they have to apply through the county.
Through the county.
Right.
El Paso County's just hosting the, essentially the collection of the, the applications, yeah.
I just wondered, just because everybody doesn't have a, don't look at the town site, right? I thought maybe in a newspaper, uh, that might not be a bad idea too.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, trustee Quinn. Hi!
Hi.
Do you have any, anything, Matt?
Only thing I'm doing is helping out is answering the phone and signing for UPS.
Awesome!
Taking messages.
Awesome, thank you, thank you for being, for willing to be in here this week to get us through week five week, I think we're taking this as week five week, sometimes it's day by day, but it's okay. So, okay, trustee Cook, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, do you, where in the reports, um, for your, your report, for, um, your... And so, we're gonna go back and we have moved the public works discussion to later on.
Okay.
But you have a report, you wonder?
Other than that, I mean, mainly what's going on is the pool and, and the, um, job position. We were fortunate to have El Paso give us a greater for a day and take care of some of the roads. We're working for a second day, that they will come up and finish some of them that we've got going. Uh, we're finding all the, all the big spots that need fixed, and so we're making a list of those so we'll be looking at, doing some, we may do some, um, individual contract work with one of the people that applies to the position of trustee who can't take the position, to come in and do some of that in the interim also.
Not for trustee.
Right, and that's interesting, yeah, there you go, I'm still, excuse me. So we're doing that. The, um, update, I hear pretty cause I'm knowing what the pool is, you have to know an updated, now it's gonna finish and we'll be holding it. But they are doing it right, and they're getting patched right now, and they're going to do a quality of your thing that should last twelve years, so that we will not be doing it again this way for a while. So, we'll do a major cost savings every year now on that, so. But I think everything is on schedule, I'm sure.
I feel like we gotta do this.
I am very impressed with the quality of work and professionalism coming from this company. Um, I know they have been working extremely diligently to get it up and going, so, anyway, so thank you.
We had just one option that was basically last night, they were gonna finish the sand last minute and I didn't go so long.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't back into town until eleven-thirty and I told them I had to stop.
It's not supposed to be too late, we're close.
Yeah.
That was way too late.
We're not ordinances.
I kinda, he asked me if he could go late, but I had no idea that this definition of late was not the same as mine. And he is a very dedicated man to his job and getting it done and done right, so I'm glad you, Carl Martin, did, so, it's gonna turn out pretty.
Yes.
Is there a curing time on that, uh, line or...
Yeah, look, that's like twenty-four hours. So it needs using standard paint, which takes much longer. Yeah, five, seven days, so it, um, it, well, that fits in for our timeline, so it'd be a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, your hard work, being the trustee liaison to the public works department. You have, you have gone above and beyond, sir, so thank you very much. Okay, um, Marshall doesn't have a report, town attorney, Mr. Cobb?
Uh, I actually have two ideas, one which should be taken care of and avoided in another special light, just, um, the second is actually a personnel matter. It, uh, deals with former, um, former personnel, uh, in town. Um, I would anticipate that the board would want to receive this in an executive session, and then it would be a very brief, uh, executive session that really wouldn't require anything other than an update and, um, really no decision by the board, so. I would suggest that I provide that to you, uh, in an executive session, either twenty-four, six, four oh two, two bet, um, but I can certainly do that, uh, toward the end of the meeting too, if you'd rather.
Board, what are your comments about that?
Uh, as always, Bob's advice, if you can lead it, that's right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so let's go back to the, um, item number, um, the update on the interim public works position since trustee Cook is here. Um, trustee Cook, would you just lead us, please?
It's still a work in progress, um, who's, we will be having somebody soon, I can, you know, as far as that goes. Uh, we made one recommendation, and he couldn't take it because of the insurance plans that we have. We're not eligible for the family, so, we're, we're retooling, kind of reloading on it, so. If we don't get an acceptable thing, we may repost it, I'm not sure, it's open right now, we may repost it. But again, we may do some, while we're doing this and we're building up the salary that's there, we may do some contract work, um, with individuals for the time needs, so. That's about it, that.
And I do wanna, just shout out to Mr. Richard Bowman today for helping with the mowing of the yards and the lake and...
And the, and the pool.
And the pool and everything, so thank you for your help, it was so, it was so good. Can I just take a picture of you in your strong hat, and your, you just made a little, like, a cigar and not supposed to be smoking. Yeah, so thank you for your help. Thank you for stepping in and helping, and I know there's more work to be done, so, thank you.
Really thanking everyone.
Cool, yeah. The planting of the flowers, I saw flowers when I drove by, and I don't know who did that, but thank y'all. And, and anybody wants to donate more flowers and, if you wanna be a gardener and you wanna plant, feel free to start planting, so, anyway, just take it upon yourself, that'll be good.
There's more picnic tables there.
There are, and I think that those picnic tables were bought, I guess, um, from public works, because those are new picnic tables this year that are out and about. The other ones need to be sanded, um, and, and finished before we put them out. And so, if we need to get somebody, you know, some help sanding those, last year the splinters were in there, and there were the two, you know, it's just not good, so. Anyway, so we need help with the sanding of those holder picnic tables to put them out by the, the park, the lake, I think we're gonna put some of those out there. Okay, um, new business, uh, I, oh, yes, Mr. Lachman?
Unfortunately, I discovered something yesterday. I'm gonna ask the board to contact forestry department about, if you have noticed, not just in town, but all the way up down the paths, all over the state, all the law-lawie pines are turning brown. There is a new beetle infestation. It is a super tiny little guy, and there are lager. I checked five trees yesterday and saw beetles and larvae. Uh, to my knowledge, there is not a thing that can be done to kill them. I am cutting down one law-lawie I've got in my tree tomorrow, but we need to contact forestry to find out if there's anything we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, is this a, a beetle, did you say, uh, like?
Yeah, it's, it's maybe a sixteenth of an inch long beetle.
So therefore it has an external skeleton?
Yes.
Did you say a hollow? So, there's a, there's a, you know, excuse me?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ellis.
There is a, uh, simple organic substance that works on external skeleton critters. And this is, uh, orange oil or lemonine. It's completely biodegradable, it can be, uh, sprayed, and it's rather pesticide on the bees.
And what is it again?
Lemonine.
Orange oil or lemonine.
Lemonine?
Lemonine.
Oh, I love it. It's summer, lemonine.
It's gotta be pretty.
Is that orange oil that you put on, uh, or do you...
No, this is, this is a, uh, agricultural, uh, product, not, not furniture polish.
Well, I, I just didn't introduce.
Mr. Lachman, um, would you mind, sir, since you know about this, if you were to call the forestry for us and any information you can get to the board about that?
I'd be thankful to.
That'd be great, we're sort of a little stretched, um, than, like, other things, so thank you, sir, for doing that for us.
Mr. Lachman, if I could call from that too, if you would, if you have the opportunity to grab a few of those you had, boom, and pack it, you know, give me a call, I'd like to see them and just follow up to, I think, before three, you know, to know which one.
By the other way, you see, you gotta take a little slice out and you put the slice in, and it's a little harder, there's one, two, three, there's a...
You should have some more of it, but...
Yes. Thank you. Is there any other new business?
I was wondering about, I saw that, um...
Uh, the, the fountain.
The new fountain.
Yes, the library fountain.
Needs a boat.
It needs a boat.
Who was gonna vote, anybody gonna vote, the ones who vote.
I, I do, I'm real sure.
Do you have a boat?
I have access to one, yes.
That would be terrific, I would be glad to get it out there anytime, we just need a rowboat, you know, that's, you know, more flat bottom, wide enough to put that in.
Right.
Uh, 'cause it's a pretty heavy, uh, device itself. I know where it hooks up and everything, I just need to, you know, as far as getting it out there.
I have the problem.
Anytime, I'll vote.
I offered, you know, the canoe, it's like, I'm just rolling with the canoe out there, and they're like, "Hey, you're not gonna do a canoe out there," so. So what do you get together with trustee Cook?
Great, thank you very much.
Awesome. Okay, municipal correspondent.
I don't think you have any.
I don't think you have any.
I'm so...
I don't think...
I don't think we have any.
Did you check mail?
We checked the mail yesterday, there was really nothing that, you know, uh... Um, the town emails are getting mon, we're, we are monitoring the town emails, um, so they have been forwarded, um, to, to my account, so I'm looking at them, and there's also a copy on the town computer as well, so at least we'll know what's going on, so. Okay?
I think the last section, Mr. Stevens, uh, is that maybe she doesn't want to go there, just look at those.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you wanted to do.
Yeah, at the next.
Yeah, we'll just look at it since he's not here.
Okay.
So, um, it's various...
Since they add that to the agenda, I just make a motion to table those next meeting.
Okay.
I make a motion to table, Mr. Trustee Stevens' resolution review until next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. Okay. So, Mr....
We need a two-thirds majority in your, uh, executive session.
Okay, so do we close that, we don't close out already, let me know.
Uh, you, you need them to make a motion to go into the...
Executive session.
All of those.
Okay, is there, uh, a motion?
And, and just so, trying to quote, it would be pursuant to twenty-four, six, four oh two, seven oh two, and, and the person discussing the personnel matter.
So she heard, you heard. I, I didn't do it, I didn't, yes. Okay, so, okay, um, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, awesome, thank you. Thank y'all for coming tonight, this party continues to be huge, so this will be on the next agenda, all right.
Jump right into it.
That's right.
See what happens, we walk in the door?
Oh, right. We got all kinds of stuff for you now. We've got a standard show.
We got a bunch of trash cans.
Well, Barbara, thank you for helping.
Oh, well, thanks for helping, you guys, anytime.
That's really great. I don't need much help.
You guys, we have a full board! Well, trustee Stevens isn't here, but, well, we have a...